August 11th, 2021, meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. I don't see, have a view of the podium, so can we take roll or in some way indicate that there's a forum here? All right, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of July 28th? Any comments or additions? None being heard, we'll proceed to correspondence. Steph, are there, is there any new correspondence? I did see a recent email today, is there anything else?
No further correspondence other than that related to items on the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Shall we dispose of any old business if there is any? I don't know of any.
None known.
Then we'll proceed to the new business. I understand we're here to review the conditional use permit application number 2021-0001, at Cap Santa North Basin RV Park by the Port of Anacortes. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Good evening, Chair, and good evening, members of the commission and members of the audience. It's great to see everybody. I'm just gonna share my screen here very quickly. And could you just let me know with a thumbs up whether you can see that or not? Thank you. So, hi, everybody, I'm Libby Grage, Planning Manager with the City of Anacortes, and I'm gonna give the staff report briefing to the commission this evening. As the chair mentioned, the application is CUP 2021-0001, submitted by the Port of Anacortes, and it is for a, an RV park. It's a conditional use permit and site plan. And this evening, we'll be holding the pre-decision, open record, public hearing on the application. Just give a brief summary of the application. As I mentioned, the applicant and landowner are the Port of Anacortes. The proposed use is a recreational vehicle park, an RV park. The site zoning is Commercial Marine, or CM, and in that zone, an RV park is a conditional use. The site location is at the Cap Sani Marina, North Basin, and it has an address of 611 T Avenue. The construction proposal is to modernize the RV park with updated facilities, including utility services to each of the spaces, paving, landscaping, stormwater improvements, 1,100 square foot restroom, combination shower and laundry building facility, and pedestrian and landscaping improvements along Market Street and Sixth Street. The Port of Anacortes acted as the lead CIPA agency on this project, and they issued a CIPA determination of non-significance on June 19th, 2021. And the requested permits that we are going to be talking about this evening are a conditional use permit for the RV park and a site plan review. In the future, the port will be, will need to submit permit applications for clearing and grading permit, construction plan approval, right-of-way permits, and building permits as well. And so, the requested action of the Planning Commission this evening is to hold the public hearing and then make a recommendation to the city council. The applicable review process for this application type is a Type 4 city council decision, and this is a screenshot from our code. The application requires a pre-application meeting, a neighborhood meeting, which have both occurred, a notice of application with a 21-day public comment period, review by city departments, and then finally, a pre-decision, open record, public hearing, which is what we are holding this evening. After the Planning Commission has made a recommendation, the project will go before the city council for a closed-record decision hearing. So, this is a vicinity map showing the project's location. We've got the Cap Sani Marina here, Fidalgo Bay is out to the east. This is the park at Cap Sani Rotary Park. And then, the red circle here is the approximate project's location. And then, zooming in a little bit closer, we've got the aerial photo over here that shows the project site circled in red. Uses in the area include the Anacortes Farmers Market, just to the west there, the Madrona Grove, the Depot site, I should say. The Anacortes Water, wastewater treatment plant is located to the north. The Anacortes Yacht Club is over here to the east. And then, there's a lot of parking, parking area for the, for the Marina users. As I mentioned already, this is a zoning for the site, Commercial Marine, and surrounding zones include the Central Business District to the west of our avenue. There's a little piece of R3 zoning, which is residential zoning, just to the east. And then, I think up here, I don't have it identified, but I believe it's manufacturing and shipping. So, the existing site, zooming in even closer here, is approximately four acres in size. It's a gravel parking lot with a central grassy area, and it currently has spaces for 26 RVs. And it's all dry camping, there are no services to those spots currently. The site overall is quite flat, and then, there are some steeper grades down to the Sixth Street side and the Market Street side on the west. Critical areas in the area, in the area. The site, the area does have a designation of an erosion hazard area and also a seismic hazard area. And then, shoreline jurisdiction, the, the subject site that's proposed to be disturbed with this proposal is outside of shoreline jurisdiction, which would be about right here, 200 feet from ordinary high water mark. So, this proposal is not subject to the shoreline master program.
Mr. Chair? Yep, Libby, can I ask you a quick question? Just for a point of clarification. So, if you back up one slide, so the red circle here, highlighting the area that's gonna be used for this parking area, is much larger than the initial slides. I just wanna verify that we're talking about the entire gravel lot becoming the RV parking spot and not just the northern section of this that was kind of what you would assume from the initial?
Yeah. Thank you, thanks for pointing that out. Yeah, the, so, the, the area of the RV park as proposed, and I'll have a slide here in just a minute, but it's only the northern portion of the site. I should have only circled that on this slide.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Just a couple of site photos, these were taken in July. It was a busy weekend, or Friday, I think it was, out, at the RV park. This first slide is looking to the north, towards the wastewater treatment plant along Market Street, and so, the RV park is up here. The second photo here is looking east along Sixth Street toward Cap Sani. This photo is looking in towards the west at the, quite a few RVs parked there on the, on the site there. And then, number four is looking right as you enter into the parking lot to the north. This is a, the site plan of showing what is proposed. So, the different project elements include relocating and consolidating the RV parking that currently exists onto the northern portion of the site, creating 25 RV spaces on approximately two and a half acres. The project would include grading and installation of improved stormwater infrastructure. The drive aisles and spaces would be paved. So, we've got, this would be the access aisle here. I'm not sure if you can see my mouse, can you see my mouse when I'm showing it on the screen? Okay, thank you. So, this is, this would be a one-way in and around and then out. Landscaping would be added to the sites, and water, sewer, power, and, well, yeah, water, sewer, and power services would be extended to each of the individual RV parking spaces. There is a proposal for a, an 1,100 square foot restroom laundry shower facility over here in the lower left-hand corner, southwest corner. And then, of course, the pedestrian improvements are proposed along Market Street, so it would be a six-foot wide sidewalk all the way along around the corner over to the intersection of Sixth Street and T, and then, back around along the project front edge. And with that would be a six-foot wide landscape strip between the sidewalk and the, and the pavement of the, of the road, along with street trees and landscaping. The applicant is also proposing installation of a couple of crosswalks, so there would be stairs that lead down from the RV park, which there's quite a grade change right now, makes it difficult for people to get over to the Depot and downtown. So, these stairs and crosswalks would provide a good way for folks to head on over to the RV, to the Depot site, the Saturday Market, and then downtown, further to the west. This is just a photo that's showing, kinda right at the intersection of T Avenue and Market Street, what it looks like right now, and then, the sidewalks and landscaping would be added to the south side of the street. The applicable review criteria for this proposal includes AMC 1936 conditional uses and AMC 1930 site plan review. In your packets, you have a staff report that went through and analyzed the conformance of the proposal with each of the different review criteria. So, I'm not gonna go through all of those right now. And staff is making a recommendation to the Planning Commission that you recommend approval of the proposal, subject to conditions. I'm happy to go through all of the recommended conditions. For now, I thought maybe just hitting on a couple might be a good idea, and then, we could let the applicant speak and the public comment and move forward from there. So, a couple of the conditions that staff is recommending include revising the site plan to incorporate a 10-foot wide Type C landscape buffer around the west and the north parameters of the RV park. And that would create some screening between the public right-of-way and views and the parking area. And also, to relocate the dumpster and recycle area enclosure elsewhere on the site so that it's not located within the public right-of-way. Staff's also recommending that the applicant provide a final landscape plan that conforms with the landscaping standards, including that 10-foot wide Type C landscape buffer around the north and west sides of the site. And that the applicant also provides some additional information about the off-street parking needs for the proposal, and identify where that parking will be provided.
Libby?
Yes.
What, what do you mean by off-shoot parking requirements?
Off-street parking requirements?
Oh, off-street, okay, gotcha.
I'm sorry, yeah, I need to enunciate, off-streets.
I'm wearing a mask, I can't hear.
Okay. The number five, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, number five, preliminary geotech evaluation that was submitted with the application did identify, as I mentioned earlier, that the site's within a seismic hazard area. So, this would just be a requirement that the applicant submit a study specific to this particular proposal to analyze the, the development and the potential impacts of that designation on the development and any mitigation that's needed. We, I also mentioned the proposed crosswalks across Market Street, and staff's recommending a condition that the applicant work with the City Parks Department and Public Works Departments to identify the best location for those sidewalks across Market Street. There are, there is a master plan concept for the overall Depot site, and that plan does show some connections from the east, or the RV park, which is right in this area, around the Madrona Grove, and then, over to the Depot, and then, moving on to, I think this is, yeah, Sixth Street and Seventh Street. So, we just wanna make sure that those sidewalks go in the optimal location to provide those connections safely. And then, the, the final condition that I'll highlight is a recommended condition that the intersection at Sixth Street, T Avenue, and Rotary Park Lane be evaluated by the applicant's traffic engineer to identify the need for potential safety improvements. We had some comments about the, a concern about safety there, and so, we're asking that the applicant's engineer take a look at that and identify whether additional stop signs are needed or other safety improvements, and that those be installed as part of the project. And those are the ones I wanted to highlight, so, with that, I'm happy to answer questions. If the Planning Commission members have any questions for staff, and I know that representatives for the Port of Anacortes are on the line, so I, I'm sure they'll, they would like to speak to the commission as well. So, are there any questions? For me?
Hi, it's Gary. Couple of questions. One, the parking, all the issues associated with parking are to be memorialized, and has that taken place, has that document been produced?
It has, it has not, no, not yet to date.
Okay, thank you. And then, the second question deals with the stormwater. And it was somewhat, I thought confusing, and it could be just me and my mask. It, it has an issue that stormwater conditions cannot be met, but yet, it, it seemed as though it indicated that the stormwater plan could not handle the stormwater off the site. And the question is, am I just reading that incorrectly? And the, the internal issue to that is you're, you're going to get oil and grease and tire residue, et cetera, coming off that site. So, how is that stormwater plan going to address those issues?
Right, so, thank you for that question. The applicant did submit a preliminary stormwater management report, which identified that they're proposing to grade the site to direct stormwater from the pollution generating hard surfaces. It'll be collected through pipes, and then, it will go to a water quality device where the water will be cleaned and in, in accordance with the Department of Ecology Stormwater Management Manual requirements and the city's NPDs requirements before being discharged to the, to the bay. And I, I think that the applicant's engineer is also on the line, so they may want to add more to that, to that response.
I look forward to hearing that.
Yeah, I mean, this is David Gobris, the civil engineer. I put that preliminary stormwater proposal together. Yeah, it is, we will be collecting all the stormwater runoff, there's no issues. We'll be meeting the current city code and the Department of Ecology requirements. The runoff from the site, the pollution generating surfaces, for sure, will be routed through a water quality treatment device that's approved by the Department of Ecology. So, we've checked those boxes, and we'll be making dirty water, clean water.
Can I ask a question? Why does it say that the filtration system can't be met because of the groundwater? I, I mean, it says, it says in the, in the staff report that, why, why does it say in there that, that that filtration can't be met because of the, it sounds like the ground table is too high or something? I mean, are you just, are you just saying that you are gonna meet the requirements, but it's maybe gonna have to be out of the box?
I can weigh in on that, Libby. So, the infiltration is one of the things that early, the Department of Ecology would like to see us infiltrate stormwater. So, one of the first steps in your stormwater evaluation is to evaluate the soils and see if that's feasible to do. On this site with the fill material that's there, infiltration into the, the ground that's there is not a feasible option for us. So, that, I believe that's what you're reading. So, after we can't infiltrate into the ground, we, we go to the next step. It doesn't diminish the treatment requirements or the level of treatment that we're providing. It's just a different option, and it shifts us into a proprietary treatment device to meet those requirements.
So, I have a couple of questions. First question is, I see that the site is owned by the Port of Anacortes and that the Port of Anacortes is the lead agency for the CIPA report. And I'm not all that familiar, so my question is, it seems like that's a conflict of interest, but maybe that's something that's done. Can you help me to understand that first?
Does anybody from the port, would you like to address that? Typically, governmental agencies are able to act as lead agency for their own proposals. So, for instance, if the City of Anacortes was doing a project, a capital improvement project, the city would act as lead agency and issue a determination. So, it's, it's pretty standard practice for, for governmental agencies to act as lead agency for their own proposals.
I might add too, this is Bill Hager with Malphost and Alangi. We did turn the checklist into the city at first. They asked us if the port wanted to be, we said we really didn't care who was the lead agency, whether it be the city or the port. The port did eventually issue the declaration and sent the same checklist and everything to the city and all the agencies for comments before the decision was made.
Thank you. Then, I also see that the construction is dependent on grant funding. Is, has that been established already?
This is Brenda from the Port of Anacortes. The port has received two separate $500,000 grants from the state's Recreation and Conservation Office. So, we're just in the final stages of finalizing those agreements, but the port has made the funding list and the funding is available. So, the funds aren't quite yet accessible to us and therefore, construction only, but we've met all the threshold requirements for those grants. So, we're just in line waiting for paperwork.
Thank you. And then, about the traffic study, I see that the city is still recommending a traffic study. I see that the port has responded saying, basically, we already did that and we don't need anything else. Can you help me to understand where that stands?
Sure, so, the, that's correct. In the staff recommendation, the, the city is requesting that the port's traffic engineer take a look at the intersection, T Avenue and Sixth Street, and that's a recommended condition of approval, and the, the port may want to weigh in on that.
I don't know if Stephanie is online. She's our engineer with Transpo. But yes, we did do a, a study early on on that intersection where Transpo looked at the site distances and everything in that intersection that's part of the CIPA checklist in our application. We're glad to review anything that may be added to that, that the city feels necessary. But if Stephanie is here, she may want to add anything more to that.
Yes, Stephanie Hurstein with Transpo Group. And we did, like Bill mentioned, do a traffic study of the proposal, included review of the T Avenue intersection site distance. We also reviewed safety data related to that intersection and provided information in our traffic study. We didn't find any historical data that showed there were reported accidents, and we did review the site distance to make sure that was adequate. But as part of the conditions, the city's just looking at it for us to review it a bit further and see if there's anything else to recommend with that location. And I also wanted to mention, we did prepare a parking study, a parking demand study that looked at parking with the project.
I, I see the letter from Brenda Tredwell that says it's unwarranted. This further study is unwarranted. And I think that's, that's dated the ninth. The letter from the city is dated the first of July. So, the city said, you need to do more of a traffic study. You've responded and said, no, we already did that and it's not warranted. But according to Ms. Grange, tonight, the city is still wanting some further something. Who?
Correct, we would like the, the engineer to look at whether a additional stop signs are, are warranted at that site.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Meesmer, if I may, help with that a little bit. So, having looked at this intersection, if any of y'all are familiar with it, it's like a five-way intersection with no stop signs. So, having talked with our city engineer about it and our public works director, we're looking at it thinking, well, it may very well need at least two stop signs. So, that's why we're asking for a little bit extra analysis on this particular intersection.
Okay. One last question, if I could. I see that you, you wanted originally to put a hotel, and you, it looks like you've dropped that proposal. Just out of curiosity, where would the hotel have been put?
This is Brenda again with the Port of Anacortes. The hotel was proposed to be essentially in the southwest corner of that North Basin lot. So, but the hotel was dropped for a number of considerations, and at this point, the port's just proposing to turn the kind of southern portion of this lot into a formalized parking area.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Yes, I, I've got a couple. How many, how will the vehicles be charged for the services, the power, the sewer, et cetera? Who do they pay? So, how is, what's the financial model for that? And how long can a vehicle stay? And what are, are there any enforcement if a vehicle overstays a period of time? If it violates the requirement, the length of stay requirements?
This is Brenda again with the Port of Anacortes. Thank you for your questions. Currently, the rate for any RV in combination is $22 a night. Certainly, with formalized spaces, the rates will increase. We haven't yet worked on our full rate model. I suspect there'll be a summer rate and a winter rate. We're also working on our rules and regulations for the RV park. We're modeling those both after the rules and regulations we have from Marina and then dozens of others, other rules established for dozens of others RV parks. You know, I suspect we'll be looking at a summer stay maximum of roughly 14 days, maybe a winter stay maximum. a winter stay maximum of 30 days. But we're still in development of all of those rules and regulations. But you're asking the very same questions we're asking ourselves in terms of how to strictly manage this so that this remains a first-rate RV park and we encourage strict compliance with our rules.
Great, thank you. The next question I have is, do you by any chance have an artist's rendering of the restroom laundry and shower facility that we could take a look at to see how it will fit in with the rest of the architecture design in that area?
I can try and bring, bring that up. I'm going to stop sharing this screen. Please just bear with me for a minute. And then I will reshare. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So this shows all four elevation sides. This is a preliminary schematic, I believe. And maybe somebody from the port could walk us through.
Maybe if it's appropriate, we should, I think it would, a lot of these questions might be answered if we just went through our presentation piece by piece and, and then have more questions afterward. Finished a lot of this, I think, was, was going to be discussed both by Brenda in terms of the overall development strategy of the port and then specifically Dean in terms of the presentation of the park and these elements that we're talking about now.
I think that would be great. Thank you. The only other question I have related to this proposal is essentially, there's a lot of conditions, what, 17 libby or some? That's a lot that we don't normally see when requests to pass the CUP. So I was wondering what the driver was to pass it at this time? With all the outstanding questions that the staff has and that has to be performed in that context.
Well, staff feels that the project is ready for a recommendation for approval. There are just some additional items that are needed, you know, that we'll look at through further review of the civil construction plans and building permit. A lot of the conditions have to do with things that need to be provided before that stage that aren't necessarily integral to approving the conditional use permit.
What would be the timing on that?
For, do you have a particular condition in mind or?
No, I'm just talking about we, we apply, approve something now. And then is there a year window to all these conditions be satisfied? Or changes be made? And does it alter the profile, usage, sizing, et cetera? A lot of things can go different ways, I imagine.
Sure. So there's a, for a conditional use permit, there's a five-year expiration timeframe. So the project would essentially need to be constructed or substantial progress towards construction within five years of the approval of the conditional use permit. Any changes to the, the plans would have to be reviewed for a potential revision to the application. And there are certain thresholds that would trigger a new application being submitted. If, if the changes are substantial, more substantial than that, then can be approved under a minor revision.
Kind of timing are you thinking to get the, what I'd call the major issues saucered and blown? So you know the program is going to go forward under normal conditions?
I think that most of these conditions are, are very easily met by the, by the port relatively quickly. You know, they might have a more exact answer on, on when they, you know, can have the traffic engineer take a look at the intersection, revise their landscape plan. But I wouldn't expect that it would take them very long to address them all.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Frank Juretsky. From a, from a security standpoint, what is the, what are the thoughts regarding the shower bathroom area? It seemed like several years ago, there were some safety issues at the other bathroom. It's at the south end of this property near the boats. People were surprised when they walked into the bathrooms or the shower areas. And again, we've got that little park directly across the street. Again, what provisions are made for that? Will all the guests have a code to access that building?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to mention that I do think that the applicant's representatives did have a, a presentation that they would like to provide and that they may have the answers to some of these questions in that presentation.
So you want to wait with the questions until after the presentation? Is that what you're saying? Okay, all right. That'd be great.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Measmer, I would recommend that the applicant give their presentations and then we have a question and answer after that.
We will come back to any questions later on in the meeting then. Thank you. Would the applicants like to go ahead with their presentation?
Thank you. Again, Brenda Tredwell with the Port of Anacortes. I had a number of introductory remarks, but we've sporadically hit on those. So I'll try to keep things very brief and then pass it on to our engineers to answer more specific questions. Just very briefly, the port began envisioning how to re-energize the properties around the north and west basin of the Marina in 2017. I know there'd been iterations in previous decades for plans around the Marina, but the port feels at this time in our commission that we're compelled to, to develop those properties. The initial plan included then this north and west basin redevelopment and RV park, a formalized parking area and a hotel in this north basin. But the hotel has been removed from consideration. And then in the west basin, the port had been considering building an event center, a large public plaza, refurbishing the esplanade, and then perhaps a couple of other building pads for, say, something like another restaurant or whatnot at the Marina. At this time, for those elements in the west basin, the event center has been tabled. There are just too many sort of uncertainties and, and we want to work more with the city and other constituents to perhaps come up with a different type of partnership or that sort of thing. So for now, those are removed from consideration. So the port's primary focus now is to work on this north basin and, and really convert that from its gravel area to more formalized and beneficial use. As, as Libby mentioned, we are looking to provide full utilities for each of the spaces. And then, as I've indicated, some pretty formalized rules and regulations. To jump back to Commissioner Juretsky's question, the restroom will be dedicated access for RV users, so likely keypad like the port has on other, are other facilities, but that will be specifically for RV users. And then just the last thing again I wanted to mention was that the city provided the port great support in obtaining this $1 million grant from RCO. And so we're appreciative of the mayor's support of our project. And from here, I'll back out with my just general overview, since I think we've hit on a number of my other topics, and then ask Dean Koontz, who's landscape architect, to step in and go over more details of the project. So thank you for your time this evening.
I thank you, Brenda, for the introduction. And yeah, I think, let's see, I can share screen as a panelist, correct? Yeah, okay. There we go. I was just gonna share the site plan that I think was, was up on the screen there briefly before. Won't go through all the, the details that Libby had, had walked through for the most part. I did want to emphasize a few items real quick and, and that is the provision for the open space that, you know, the minimum requirement is 8%. And right now, we're almost at 40, which is a, a pretty good way of maximizing our arrangement on the site from what is more or less a gravel blank slate at this point in time, as well as the streetscape improvements where we're, you know, putting in at least, well, 20 trees, 20 trees in the landscape strip along the north and the west sides of the parcel. So along the south side of Sixth and the east side of Market. I wonder if I can, this might show up. So along those areas. And, you know, for right now, we have provision of the crosswalks that Libby was mentioning. And of course, we can always, you know, we look forward to trying to work out where the best location for those can be. Those can easily shift where they need to based on the design to, to really provide more connectivity to, to the Madrona Grove and the Depot and those areas. So I think there's a lot of flexibility that we can work into the, the design per se. I don't have the building, I'm the landscape architect, I forgot to mention that. Dean Koontz is the landscape architect. I can talk a bit about the building, the restroom, shower, laundry building. I don't know, Libby, do you still have the, that schematic that you? If I stopped sharing, can that be shared? Not sure.
Yes, I, I can bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
There we go.
Great, thank you so much. So I, this is mostly a three-dimensional model for showing the basic configuration and form. I think one of the conditions was about transparency. And we, the design of the building does have windows to provide some natural daylight. These, for the most part, around the edges would be frosted and they're at the upper part of the building or of the walls. You know, clearly, we don't want to have transparent windows at the showers and the restrooms. But, you know, do want to have at least some natural light coming into the building during the usage. The, the exception being the laundry room area, which has a lot more, the larger, the larger windows that you can see here. As for color, construction material, all of that has not been picked or decided. So I think, you know, there, there's one of the conditions about coordinating with the city on that. And I think that's, that's another item that, you know, we're totally able to, to be flexible and integrate comments from, from the city's staff on how that might be seen from the right of way. So those are sort of in, in development and, you know, not fixed in stone, let's just say. You know, and I should, I should mention to, for the RV sizes, in case there might be a question on that, they're all sized for a Class A recreational vehicle, the stalls are. There's a variety of different classes that designate the sizes for various RVs. That's, that's on the medium to larger end. So it would fit smaller ones as well. And the length of several of the stalls are also designed for rigs. So with, RV has a carpool on the back of it. That, that can be accommodated as well. Yeah, I think with that, that would cover most of some of the additional points that I was going to make. I guess, David, civil engineering, do you have some additional points past the baton?
Yeah, I can add a couple of things. David Galbrook with Pacific Survey and Engineering, civil engineer for the port. A few highlights that I had listed here, one we've already touched on a little bit, where the stormwater, just to reiterate, you know, we are meeting the city and Department of Ecology requirements on that with the water quality treatment for the site. From a utility perspective, the site's well-served with water and sewer. You know, we'll make some improvements on the site, but both water and sewer are right adjacent to us, easy connections. Also worked with fire department a little bit. It's kind of hard to see on the site plans, but there's a few hydrants scattered around in there. Those have been, those placements are based on our work with the fire department folks to make sure we're meeting those needs as well. We've seen the street improvements a little bit on Market Street and Sixth Street, the sidewalks. We'll be improving the pedestrian connectivity around there and ability to walk. We will be working with the parks folks and public works just to kind of finalize those dimensions and locations for that stuff prior to our final design submittals for permits. But those are kind of the highlights from a civil perspective. Everything's fairly straightforward and there for us.
Sir, could I ask you a quick question?
You bet.
I, I think during Libby's presentation, she mentioned off-street parking. Is that a requirement? And if so, are we talking about Market Street, Sixth Street?
Yes, the off-street parking was one of the comments from the city and the staff report. It's not shown on the plan that you guys see right now, but immediately south of the RV park, the port's planning on adding some parking facilities. So there'll be an additional, we'll designate some of those parking spaces to this to meet that requirement. There we go.
Thank you. I, I think you can see from this sketch, originally, this is Bill Hager from Mall Foster and Alangee again, I'm the senior planner on the team. Through the planning process, there was a hotel planned for this. I think the port heard from both their Marina tenants and, and other folks in the area that they felt that the parking is, was at a premium in this area. And so the, the port has gone to this concept right now where the south part is primarily used for just open space and about 135 parking spaces, as I recall, or 120 maybe, which is more than enough not only to accommodate the existing slips off of J dock there, but have many excess. And we're perfectly, I think the port's perfectly amenable to having three or four designated for guest parking for this, for, for guests of the RV park, if that's desired and necessary. So that just kind of fills in on the parking.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I, I was under the impression that off-street would have included Market Street and Sixth, but that is not the case. It's, it's what we're looking at right now is what we refer to as off-street parking.
If that, if that was a question for me, yes, we, the port will have more than enough parking, not only to accommodate the RV park, the Marina, but a few guests as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments from the presenter? In the interest of moving along the meeting, I'm proposing that we go ahead and open the public meeting and conclude, after the conclusion of the, of the hearing, the commissioners will have time for further discussion and questions. Any objections to doing it that way? And being heard, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any presenters in the public?
I don't have any attendees at this time.
Going once, going twice, we will close the public hearing. Do commissioners have any further questions or discussion?
Yes. It's Gary Mullen. Oh, I have a question. Or maybe a comment. The utility building is 1,100 square feet. That's a fairly large-sized building. It actually is the size of many small starter houses in large parts of the country. Either they can be designed as utility buildings, just a bathroom building, or something much better than that. And I'm hoping that the applicant will work with the city to make this a little jewel. Right now, I'm, from the drawings presented, it looks pretty much like, I'm going to say, the, the building I bought at Home Depot, which is at the back of my garden. It It, it does not represent what the, the face of the city should be or the quality of the city is hoping for. And I know the port in the past has designed some very amazing structures and would like to see a little more effort put there and to work with the city on that. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I still have some questions. So I, I think we resolved the question that the restroom showers will be, laundry room will be secure. Is the parking lot on the south end, currently it's gravel. Is, is part of the plan to blacktop or pave that also, or is that going to continue to be gravel? Basically, the southwest corner of the parking lot.
This is Brenda from the Port of Anacortes. It will be fully developed into a formalized parking area, asphalt curbs, that type of thing.
Okay. Because that is within 200 feet of the shoreline, does, does it come in, are there any questions about the shoreline act?
Good question. Go ahead, Libby.
Thank you. I was going to say that, yes, the parking lot projects will be coming before the Planning Commission as part of the shoreline substantial development permit application.
Okay. I, I guess I'm a little confused about the timing and some of the questions. One of the, one of the, one of the things Libby said was that the city is requiring that traffic engineer continue a study regarding safety issues. And, but the safety engineers seem to think they've already done that and that it's all resolved. But the timing of the, the timing of both those, the, the request and the fact that it was done earlier, is that resolved? I guess in my mind, is that resolved? And then I think Libby said that the engineer will decide what else is needed. Does the city have the right to say, no, that's not enough? Or whatever they present, that's basically because they're traffic engineers, that that's what we're going to live with?
And I'll take that question. Thank you, Mr. Dreszky. So yes, the city has the authority over our city right of ways to determine whether or not we want more safety features at an intersection or not. That's where our city engineer and our public works director comes in. And that, that comes from not just the information from the project applicant's traffic engineer, but from general local knowledge of what's been happening, as well as what we hear from the residents in the area. And so, and let's keep in mind that the conditions that you see on this project really, there isn't anything in these conditions that would take the applicant longer than a couple of weeks to take care of. There's nothing here that would prevent them from, you know, building this RV park. I'd also like to add that, you know, when we're talking about storm drainage, I want to say about two years ago, the city adopted a policy where every project of this nature, commercial project or large development projects, the project engineer will develop their drainage plan. The city, city staff will take a look at that and the preliminary plans like what we're seeing now. And then when it is designed fully, ready for the civil drawings and ready to go into the ground, we send that off for third-party review to another engineer who's been doing all of our reviews. Then when it comes back, the applicant addresses any concerns. And by the time it's done, it's ready to roll and it meets ecology standards and it meets the city's requirements as well.
Thank you. And one last question. Can we go back to one of the maps? I just want to make sure I understand what the access, the access points for this thing are. It looks like there's two on T Avenue and then one through the southwest corner of the existing parking lot or the newly paved parking lot. Is that how people are going to get in and out of this new RV park? I, I guess I'm just looking for the traffic flow in and out of that thing.
Sure. So if you can see my screen here. So this is Market Street here. And so I believe that the RVs will be able to come, oops, trying to get the full shot here. So this is the, the parking lot farther to the south, but RVs would be able to come through.
We're not, we're not seeing it yet.
We're not seeing it yet, Libby.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
No problem, okay.
So this is the south parking lot that we were just looking at. It's all gravel right now. And there's a current, you know, drive path that goes through over to the drive aisle here. So I believe that RVs could come in this direction or they could come, keep heading north on Market Street around to Sixth Street and then south onto T and then into this entrance here and around. So those two access points are new. Those are not currently there.
Not owning an RV, do, do all those spaces have to be accessed by backing into them?
I think there's some.
That's what I'm suggesting, isn't it?
This is a pull-through down on the south side.
That, that lower drive there on the south end of the RV park altogether is designed to provide pull-through slips for potentially larger RVs who just need to pull into those angles.
Okay, and then what about the ones north of that? There's, it looks like there's multiple units.
In an RV world, RVers typically back into their slips. So those, those will all be, you know, they'll be parking in reverse on all of those.
Okay.
The other slips.
Yeah, I think we should mention that we did review this with a number of RVers and that is the preferred method. Some folks said, yeah, but it would be nice to have pull-throughs. So the port said, okay, we'll do the bottom road, bottom tier with pull-through if those people prefer that method. But boy, typically, most RV parks of these, they are back in.
I'm still confused because if the people come in from the south, if you can, Libby can use her cursor to the, the south entrance?
Oh.
The south entrance of the, of the map we're looking at right now, where?
Oh, not this one.
Yeah, that's okay. If you can scroll, can you scroll down a little bit on that so we can see the south? Okay, so people would come in from the south and go through the parking lot and then, oh, they would, okay, I'm using the arrows though to see how they would still do, how they would still do a pull-through. Because the arrows, I think, on one of the other maps show that that bottom driveway, the traffic flow was from left to right.
If I may, Mr. Dreszky, so yeah, those are pull-through sites that would be from east to west. Although I did mention to the port that I would probably go the opposite direction so that I could see the marina if I were pulling in there. But this, what you see here is, on the very bottom one, the slips, you would pull in from T Avenue and then drive through those pull-through slips.
Okay, so there's actually four accesses, then three on T and one from the south, correct? Okay.
This is David, civil engineer. That access to the south that's being referenced, that won't be, that, there'll be signage on that saying, do not enter for people from the parking lot to not go through there. The purpose of that is just should somebody pull that, pull in that southern access lane and all of those spaces are filled and they get to the end, we didn't want them to have to back out. So they have an easy relief valve to go through the parking lot and, and get out.
Pardon my stupidity here, but, okay, so let's say somebody pulls in off of T Avenue at the most southerly part of that, of access, and all of those units are full. How are they going to get to the more northerly part since they can't turn and go around to the left? That's a no-access route. How, anybody pulls in there, are they going to have to back out onto T Avenue in order to get one of the other two accesses?
No, that, that's, that's the purpose of that access or the connection to the southern parking lot, is that should somebody pull into that southern access on T Avenue and realize that all the spaces are full, then they will continue left into the parking lot and then get back out onto either Market Street or T Avenue.
Okay. Just seems a tad bit clumsy to me for somebody, a first-time visitor, maybe somebody even pulling in at dusk or whatever. That just seems like a scary, scary proposition. But again, I'm not an RV, maybe they're very used to maneuvering in these sort of situations.
I have one other question. When talking about the stormwater, was permeable, permeable pavement for infiltration considered? Or is that out because of the soil types?
Yeah, that goes back to the soil type and the soil analysis or investigation that we looked at. So a geotechnical engineer went out and took some samples to evaluate that and deemed that infiltration was not feasible. So that, that takes off the table the permeable pavements or other infiltration-type stormwater management strategies, so.
I have a, oh, kind of a weird question, but what? What if I drove my old beat-up RV and signed up for 30 days? And assuming the parking is not full, and at the end of 30 days, I unhook, I paid all the fees, all the, you know, utilities, and then I drive away. And in the afternoon of, if the lot is not full, I go ahead and apply for another reservation for 30 days. And theoretically, I do this continuously for a year. What would keep me from doing that? Other than the part, the park being full every time I go in for a new application? Essentially, I would live there full-time.
The port has an existing policy, because we have, we use the area for RV camping currently. The port has an existing policy that, and, and I'm sorry, can't think of the number of days off the top of my head, but, but currently, you can only be there for 14 days and then you must leave for a set number of days, which I'm thinking is another 14 days before you can come back and return. But we're already managing around that issue because we do have a number of folks who would prefer to just set up residence here because the price is right. But we already manage around that issue and I'm happy to provide that policy, just can't think of it off the top of our, of my head. Our marina currently manages this area. I'd have to ask one of their staff.
No, that's perfect. That's what I, that's what I was looking for, is that you have run into that. It's a real live problem. KOA sees it all the time across the country. So I'm just wondering, you guys have a policy? Thank you.
Any more questions or discussion from commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is this open for, like, commissioner conversation time now? Is that what we're suggesting we do here?
That's what I thought we were gonna do, yep.
Okay. You know, I, I'm with some of the folks who spoke earlier about what is the, what is the rush to make an approval tonight, considering the fact that I think the city mentioned that it may take as much as two weeks for the port to do some of the additional engineering surveys and reviews they need to do in order to satisfy the city's requirement, where perhaps maybe we can review that at our next Planning Commission meeting before we kick this up to the city council. I mean, ideally, we submit to the city council something that has been suitcase, right? All the boxes are checked and we're confident that we're making the right recommendation. I mean, I, the SEPA thing kind of is fishy, but I understand we've done that in the past. So I, I throw that out as a discussion item for the rest of the commission to kind of consider.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Meesmer.
Go ahead, Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you. SEPA, so the port has acted as lead agency on SEPA for the last 15 years that I'm aware of and for many of their projects. When they, when they conduct their SEPA review, the city is provided with the SEPA checklist as well as open comment period. And that open comment period is open to the public and then they address whatever comments come forward. So the city's very comfortable with the port being the SEPA lead agency on this project as well as many others that they've done. As far as a two-week period to, for the port or their civil engineers to take care of some of the conditions. So the purpose for the, for staff adding conditions on the project is that the port as applicant provides the city, the Planning Commission, with a project that is about 90% complete, I'm going to say. And before they finish up all their design, they want to know, as well as any other applicant would want to know, what exactly the commissioners or the city council might put on the project as conditions before they go into full-blown design. So they, you know, they don't really want to design that building right now until they know whether or not they're going to get approval from the, from the city council and what that looks like. And as far as, you know, the civil engineers, we have their preliminary drainage report that tells the city, okay, well, we know infiltration's not going to work, so they're going to have to do, you know, some hard piping and move some stuff around to make it work. We have their preliminary proposal for sanitary sewer and connections like that, but we don't have all the details. Those come later, once they get approval for their conditional use permit. And that's standard practice for all projects that come across the commissioner's desk and, and the city council's desk as well. So from a staff perspective, we're comfortable recommending approval to the commissioners and the commissioners recommending approval to the city council. And as I mentioned before, there's so much of this that's going to go through third-party review, especially all the drainage. And, you know, we're also looking at this as we start moving along. For the, from the port's perspective, and I don't want to speak for them absolutely, but again, they're hoping that they can get some approval so that they can execute their consultants to start moving forward and get this thing built. That's what they're looking for. I hope that helps.
I have a comment. It seems like the intersection is one of the sticking points. I mean, I brought up the drainage and I, I would prefer permeable, you know, pavement and that, but it sounds like that's not possible. So obviously, you have to work within your, your constraints. So I do trust that as long as it's being reviewed by DOE, that those requirements will be met. But it seems like maybe that, the problems with that intersection might be bigger than just this project. Like, could that maybe be something that's brought to attention of like that intersection as a safety issue separate from this? Because I feel comfortable with this project as a use. I think some of these issues are kind of auxiliary issues that, you know, we're just, I think the worry is that this is going to exacerbate something that's already bad, right? I mean, that's my interpretation.
With the intersection, yeah, thank you. So, and that's why we're asking for their civil, or their traffic engineer to work with us on that a little bit. And we're going to have our city engineer working on it as well. And keeping in mind that as the different, different areas develop around there, then we will end up having to have another look at it from a traffic engineer. So what they've already done is they've looked and said, okay, we've got the RV park and we've got the parking lot, the trips generated on that, we've looked at it, it's not going to impact the intersection. There are no sight distance issues and we agree with them that there are no sight distance issues. But what we are concerned about is a five-leg intersection with no stop signs and we think that there probably should be two stop signs on that intersection. And I think the port agrees with us and they're willing to move forward with that. And so we're, we're pretty comfortable with that as well.
So I'm just trying to think about the, the process again, where the Planning Commission comes into play with a conditional use permit that still has several different conditions that have yet to be met for the city, right? And I, I just don't want to run into a situation where we make a recommendation to city council and we find that there's several of these things that, you know, is the cart before the horse kind of a thing? We make an approval before the conditions are met. Are the conditions going to be met before this goes before city council or is?
So, if I may, as with every project that comes in either for a conditional use permit, a long plat or whatever the project a long plat, or whatever the project might be, staff will recommend a number of conditions. I can think of a couple of projects where we've had over 30 conditions, and none of those are met until the project actually starts construction. And then, through that construction process, you know, city staff is looking at all the conditions, we're reviewing the drawings during construction, we're inspecting to make sure that they've met those conditions, and then at the end, they don't get a final inspection, and they can't use it until the conditions are met. And many of the conditions, for instance, there's probably one in there about storm drainage. They couldn't meet that until after it was constructed on-site, and it meets all the requirements of the approved drawings. But it's usual to have all the conditions, and then move it forward to council, and then council approves it, and then it's staff's responsibility to make sure that they meet all those conditions. If any of the conditions are proposed to be modified, as Libby mentioned, there's a certain amount, I can't remember the percentage, I think it might be 10%, if an applicant asks for a 10% revision in the conditions, then it has to come back to the planning commission and city council for approval. We very rarely have any of those, but many of these are standard conditions.
I mean, I've been with you for the last several years, and I appreciate the fact that we've gone through this before, and we've accepted conditions. I just, so I guess if I understand what you're saying correctly, the landscaping buffer, you're confident that the port's going to meet you on that, the trash being moved, you're confident that's going to happen, the stormwater concerns that we all have are going to be addressed appropriately. And so based on that, your recommendation still stands that we should approve this to go forward?
It is staff's recommendation that the planning commission make recommendations to the city council for approval with the conditions, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion with commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Linda Martin. I'm just, I'm comfortable with the project. I think it, and, you know, we have to trust staff that they're going to follow through with the conditions that they're recommending. I'm fine with all of that. Just a little thing in the back of my mind that I'm a little bit concerned as I, especially as I read the SEPA, you know, they originally wanted the hotel, and you heard from Ms. Tredwell that they also had planned the event center and all of that. The little thing in the back of my mind is, so are we approving this one? And it's like, once we approve this one, now it's going to snowball into the next one? You know, I don't know. It doesn't, I think there's nothing we can do about that at this moment. It's just something for me, at least for me, just in the back of my mind. Having said that, I'm still comfortable moving forward.
For just clarification, and she does bring up a good point. So, we're voting on the RV park today. It sounds like the parking to the south of the RV park is going to come to us soon, but somewhere between those two projects, we're going to tie in the intersection with more stop signs. And the city's going to take lead on that, and that doesn't have to come through planning commission, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, I'll weigh in and say that, on balance, I feel pretty comfortable with this. My understanding of the conditional use permit process is that all of these conditions, that the approval for the use is subject to those conditions being met. And until they're met, there is no use available.
Linda, to satisfy your requirement, couldn't we just amend the CUP to say, "And this excludes any future consideration of a hotel, an event center, et cetera?" Would that satisfy you?
If I might, so if we're to look into the crystal ball and say that they might build a hotel in the future or something, then they're going to have to go through the exact same process. And when they do that, we're going to be looking at, how does that impact everything going on around it? So the RV park, a hotel, now we combine all of that traffic flow to see if they need to do something else in another intersection. So, we, there's, the only, in amending a conditional use permit, would only be for if, for some reason, they decided, "Okay, well, we're only going to do half of the RV spots." Then we could amend it. But we could not amend the CUP to include a hotel. No. Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there anyone prepared to make a motion?
One, just curiosity question. It seemed like the ownership of pieces of the property was up for grabs. Has that been resolved?
That's a good question. We are currently working with a surveyor. The port has the property, from everything we can tell, including the survey that we have. There are a couple of easements that are left in place when streets were vacated years ago. And so we're going to be looking at the relinquishment of easements, and then the dedication of easements when the new utilities, public utilities, go in.
So the answer is, I'm not sure what your answer is. They're not quite resolved yet?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Is it not quite resolved? Who owns what?
No, we're comfortable with who owns what.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd be comfortable making a motion to approve this project with the provisos, the recommendations of staff.
I second that motion.
Shall we take a roll, please?
Aye.
Graff?
Yes.
I don't know how to pronounce your name.
Aye.
Aye.
I approve.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye too. Thank you, one and all. Are there any last comments or any new business at all?
I want to thank the port staff members and participants that helped us get through this, and Mr. Meesner as well.
Thank you, everyone.
Second that one. Thank you, everybody. We'll look forward to our next meeting, and we'll close the meeting here for August 11th of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Good night, all.